Hey, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everybody to the meeting and call the meeting to order. We would just like to acknowledge the traditional territories of the Dene and Cree people of Fort Nelson First Nation and the Dene-Sah people of Prophet River First Nation. We also acknowledge the traditional territories of the people of Treaty 8 and 11 regions in northeast B.C., the traditional unseated territory of the Casca peoples, and the enduring presence of the Mati community in the region. Please be advised that tonight's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually, is being streamed and recorded. Are there any additions to the agenda? I'm hearing none. I think I need like a motion to.
Agenda.
Okay. Yeah, that would be him. And councillor Roper seconded it. Any opposed? Perfect, motion carries. A public comment period. Anybody would like to speak to the agenda? Oh, now we do the adoption. Well, I'm ahead of the game, so that's good. Okay, petitions and delegations. So I would call on staff to lead us in a discussion on the design completion for Art Fraser Park. Do we have guests? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and staff and members of the public. So today we wanted to bring forward to council our 95% detail design that we've been working with Lees and Associates to continue on the Art Fraser Park proposed upgrades. So we have Ivy and Heidi both online to share a presentation. I won't say any of the secrets so that they can all be surprised and jazzed with the presentation they have. I'll let them take it over from here.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of staff. My name is Heidi Redman, Principal of Lees and Associates. We're pleased to be here this evening to provide a progress update on the detailed design work for improvements at Art Fraser Park. Ivy Smith and myself are pleased to represent our consulting team, which also includes Patrick Beach and McIlhany, who is providing engineering services. Our agenda today includes a project overview. We'll provide a summary of our 95% drawings, updates on park improvements that are part of the detailed design, and finally, an update on budget and next steps. We will have time for questions at the end. The overall project objective is to improve the park amenities and circulation to enhance the visitor experience, community well-being and accessibility. Art Fraser is one of the community's flagship parks, yet it does not currently provide a quality experience for users with accessibility needs. Upgrades are needed to the infrastructure to meet current and future demands of the community. In particular, the playground and many of the amenities are not accessible to all users, and there has been public requests for better circulation within and around the park. Today's presentation provides an update to council on 95% completion of the detailed design. The intention is to proceed with the next phase issued for tender drawings, which staff will use to apply for grants and funding. Work continues to progress on schedule, and we are meeting with staff for their input every other week. I'll hand it over now to Ivy for a summary of the park improvements.
Thanks, Heidi. So next we'll walk through the design elements that were added or modified since the 50% drawing set that was shared in January. So first, we'll look at the playground design. A reminder that the assessments of the existing playground revealed that much of the existing play equipment is in poor condition and nearing the end of its life. And most of the existing play surfacing and equipment are not accessible. So we're proposing a new playground that will incorporate accessible play features. The playground design shows two surface types. The green surfacing shows a fully accessible poured-in-place rubber surface, and the beige color surface is an engineered wood fiber surfacing, which is also considered accessible but offers a bit more challenge for play. There will be a variety of play equipment for all ages and abilities, including sensory and musical play. The style of equipment of play equipment is mostly wood-based, giving it an earthy, nature-inspired feel. There are opportunities for active play, including a play structure and a slide, as well as a climbing circuit and seesaw reflective of the animals in the north. There's also an accessible carousel with spaces to sit or roll a wheelchair and a swing set that will accommodate the existing accessible bucket swing. So we heard at the last council meeting that Northern Rockies would be interested in applying for the Stewardship B.C. community grant program that funds surfacing used with using recycled tires. So we have specified use of a poured-in-place rubber surfacing from a supplier that uses recycled Canadian tires in their materials. The surfacing would be easily navigable with wheelchairs, strollers, or other wheeled devices. We've also updated the layout for the mini pump track located in the north end of the park. The mini pump track has been proposed for younger children to get comfortable with off-road biking skills. And several picnic tables will be relocated nearby for parents and caregivers to supervise. The mini pump track has been laid out specifically around the existing cluster of trees in the park and will limit the removal of trees necessary. It has three features, including rollers, berms, and tabletops along the circuit that will test bike skills. During the conceptual phase, the public requested to have more shade in the park. So we are proposing the addition of new trees throughout the park, as well as three new shade structures. Something to note is that the trees specified include species that are non-fruit-bearing and non-wildlife attractants. For the shade structures, we are proposing to add a picnic shelter to match the existing, a pergola with seating, and some shade sails for the spray park. We heard from council last time the desire to use materials that are resistant to vandalism. And we are proposing vandal-resistant materials such as concrete and metal for site furnishing and structures throughout the park. So we're proposing to add four locally manufactured accessible picnic tables similar to the existing concrete picnic table, with two picnic tables located under the new pergola and two under the new picnic shelter. All the benches will be relocated, existing benches, with improvements for accessibility. For example, adding a concrete pad base that includes a space for a wheelchair to roll up next to the bench. We are proposing replacing two of the existing bleachers with accessible bleachers that have space for wheelchair seating centrally. Improved signage will match existing park features within Fort Nelson with the stone base, and signage graphics could be coordinated with those at Andy Bailey Park and with the upcoming community plan to match branding and colors. We have proposed improvements to the existing parking lot and have also proposed a new overflow parking lot in the south of the park. The existing parking improvements include adding two accessible parking stalls, a crosswalk connecting the north and south sides of the park, and a bollard and chain system. So we took feedback from the last council meeting and after further exploring the suggestion of removing all of the parking from within the park, we decided with the Northern Rockies team that the ideal balance to maintain accessibility while also reducing traffic near the play area was to add an option to temporarily close a portion of the parking lot for events. So with this bollard and removable chain and lock system, this will separate the interior section of the parking lot from regular use while still allowing the use for needed use needed for additional parking space. This is already in practice during some events. And something to note is that the emergency services, as well as park staff, would have keys to access the locks to this system. In the overflow parking lot, there is one proposed accessible parking stall with direct access to the trail via a curb cut. And lastly, trail lighting has been added to the looping trail on the outside of the Ball Diamonds. And this lighting will illuminate the trail for use during the darker months and times of day. And I'll hand it back over to Heidi.
At the 95% detailed design stage, construction costs are estimated to be around 1.9 million, including contingencies. The 95% costing is slightly higher than the previous cost estimate due to the addition of the pathway lighting to expand year-round usage of the perimeter trail around the Ball Diamonds and updated unit costing from Public Works for asphalt and gravel supply. This costing includes all phases of the design so that the RM can pursue funding for all components of the proposed park upgrades. The largest budget item is the playground, which is roughly 418,000 for the new features and surfacing and disposal of the current features. The next largest item is the overflow parking lot at 315,000, which includes the stormwater system connection. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our next submission will be tender-ready drawings and technical specifications and updated costing. After that, it is back over to explore grant opportunities such as the Destination Development Fund that is supporting improvements to Andy Bailey or other grants such as the Stewardship B.C.'s community grant program that funds playground surfacing for recycled tire products. In conclusion, we hope that this design will assist the regional municipality in making changes to reduce barriers and increase accessibility at Art Fraser Park for both residents and visitors to the region. By improving the park for accessibility, the site will be improved for the community as a whole. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for having us here today, and we're happy to join Jonathan and staff in answering any questions.
Thank you, Ivy and Heidi. Very well done. At this point, I will turn over to council for any questions, concerns, discussion. Hopefully answer the best you can.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, I thought it was a great presentation. Thank you very much. You know what? I do have a question. Can you go back to the slide that showed the parking lot?
I'll pull it right up here for you.
Thank you. I guess my question, and there was some information came to us actually from the Historical Society Museum Society at a different meeting when we were talking about moving buildings around. And they actually used this route to get buildings into the back of the museum property. And I'm just wondering if there's, I know you talked about the bollard system, but it's removable. But I'm wondering if there's anything permanent being installed, because it looks pretty small to me. If there's anything permanent being installed in that sort of route that would continue right through this property over to the museum property. For, I mean, they're not going to do it very often, obviously, is move buildings onto their site, but there are a few that they're interested in moving, and this is the way they've sort of always done it. So, you know, is there anything that's sort of permanently being installed there that would get in the way?
Is that the route that I just drew on there? Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's right. So they would bring the building right straight through there, across this property, and then they hold the adjacent property to the west. So, you know, the bollard system, and I think those, was it just the chain that could be removed, or could you actually pull the posts as well?
So far, I think we're just proposing to have the chains, so it would be about a, probably about a I'd have to double-check the distance of the, between the permanent bollards, but more than six meters, I would assume. How much room do you know is needed for moving the buildings? I'm assuming a lot.
Yeah, you know, they probably need the width of a road for sure, but, you know, I mean, the bollards could be installed such that they could be removed.
There are removable bollard products, so that is something we could specify. Otherwise, the only other improvements are on the surface of the pavement with the pavement markings and crosswalk.
Right, so they could actually still use this. There's no curbs being installed there or anything. They could actually still use this then.
Yep.
Oh, okay, thanks. We'll just have to consider this if we ever get some funding to move this forward. Thanks very much.
Great. I don't see any other questions. So, yeah, appreciate you coming here today and giving us this presentation. Anything else you would like to add, Jonathan?
No, I'm good. Thanks very much for having me, and I look forward to being with you in this project.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I mean, that takes us to 6.1, which is the Art Fraser Park improvements. And I'm thinking we just did that with that presentation, so unless I'm wrong, we're just going to move on to new business items. There were no council additions, so we'll go to 7.2 evacuation plan presentation and discussion. Ms. LaBelle.
Thank you very much. I'll just bring up the presentation here. Okay, perfect. I handed it up in front of council is a large copy of the presentation as well as a copy of the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality and Fort Nelson First Nations evac plan, which this presentation has been based on. So essentially, the presentation is just a more visually friendly version of a very text-heavy document. So everything that is inside of the presentation is contained inside of the formal evacuation plan. So feel free to stop me at any time with any questions that you may have. So I'm just going to start off with just a quick overview. The Northern Rockies has what we call the Local Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. It is a very fulsome document that contains a number of, it contains a copy of the emergency management plan as well as several appendices and what we call annexes. The annexes are all standalone plans that serve a different business unit of the organization or a different business purpose. So inside of an annex, you've got our potable water emergency response plan, you've got our airport response plan, you have our business continuity plans, our community wildfire protection plans, and different things like that. And one of the annex, annex number six, is our evacuation plan. So that is the document that I handed out here. I thought I would just start off just really quickly. We have essentially 10 hazards within the province of British Columbia. Not all of these are going to require evacuation, of course. And not all of these are relevant or applicable within the Northern Rockies. So within our area, of course, our number, I'm going to say our number one, two, and three risks are going to be wildfires, hazardous material spill, power outages, and severe weather. Those are probably our biggest ones that we are facing. Only a couple of those require evacuations.
Okay, could I just pause you for a moment?
Yes.
Mayor, do you have a question?
I did, Erin. I just wanted to ask if that entire document with all the annexes, yeah, that one, is that available on the webpage? Is that a document that's available to the public?
It is a document that is generally available to the public. We pulled it down to update it for the new emergency and disaster mitigation legislation, so we had to change all of our references to the old Emergency Program Act. So we've got, I'm going to say, 90% of them updated, and they will be updated here probably by the end of this month. And then pretty much everything will be available except those things that are listed as protected.
Okay, thank you.
So we have essentially three types of evacuations within emergency management. The first one I'm just going to reference is a tactical evacuation. These are used often by emergency services such as fire departments or RCMP to clear an area around a hazard. So this would be when we had a gas leak down in Midtown, fire department conducted a tactical evacuation. It's usually done through a door-knocking exercise, and people are asked to evacuate immediately. One other thing that I've listed here over on the far right is called shelter in place. And shelter in place is shelter in place is essentially when people are directed to shelter in buildings until an emergency situation has has been mitigated. This is often used in an airborne emergency when you don't want people exiting a building. We use shelter in place at our rec center for ammonia leaks because you don't want people exiting the buildings because they're not aware of where the hazard is. And while it doesn't typically get thought of as an evacuation, it is considered an evacuation because you are controlling the population, essentially. What I'm going to focus on for this presentation is a planned evacuation where we hope we have adequate warning about the threat or hazard, and we have time to communicate and coordinate the evacuation. So that's what this presentation is going to sort of be focusing on.
I have another question.
Yep.
You're going to hate me probably. Is the shelter in place evacuation the same as a tactical evacuation? You know, or do we need do we need a state of emergency to declare it?
So you don't need a state of emergency for either a tactical or a shelter in place because the responding agency has the authority for life safety to control the movement of people. But what we often do is in the case of either a tactical or shelter in place, we would do the paperwork, i.e. declare the state of local emergency and issue the evacuation order after the fact, which would allow those residents who may be displaced as a result of a tactical evacuation or those who may be stuck in a shelter in place to access any emergency support services because we would need that state of local emergency and evacuation order for them to be able to access those supports. So we would do the paperwork behind the fact just to sort of clean everything up.
Okay, thanks.
There are several groups responsible and involved in an evacuation. And this particular, I'm going to call it a very loose Venn diagram. I sort of designed this if we were doing an evacuation for a wildfire hazard. So sitting at the center is the Emergency Operations Center, and our job is planning, coordination, information. And we have the authority under the legislation to issue that evacuation order. None of these other agencies have that actual authority. I'm going to start in the top right-hand corner and work my way clockwise. So B.C. Wildfire Services, they are, in a case of a wildfire, would be the responding emergency agency that is going to be conducting the incident site command. They would also be doing any hazard assessments. They would be communicating with the EOC about the scene, about the wildfire, and doing any of those hazard assessments required. Emergency Management and Climate Readiness is the provincial agency that would provide us with regional and provincial coordination, and it would also assist us with many of the other agencies. Modi and Public Works in Precurment, Canada, we would be dealing with them to coordinate road transportation corridors if we were doing a road evacuation. We would be utilizing our airport staff to make sure that our airport remains safe to be able to land planes. They would work with B.C. ambulance, who is going to be assisting with the evacuation of Fort Nelson General Hospital and all of the other care centers in the region. Northern Health would be doing the evacuation of the hospital and their long-term care, and they would also assist us with the identification of any residents who may need assistance. We would utilize the public health staff. We would utilize any staff who has knowledge of residents within the community who might need assistance. RCMP actually conduct and enforce the evacuation. So if we were to switch from the wildfire being the incident to the evacuation now being the incident, the RCMP actually takes incident command because they have the legislative authority to conduct the evacuation and to enforce it. On top of the RCMP would be resource allocation. This would be any of our community partners or any of the resources that we require to assist and support the RCMP with that evacuation. Over on the other side is human resources. So the RCMP through EMCR, the Emergency Management and Climate Readiness Ministry, have the ability to task different agencies to assist with the evacuation. So in this example, I have search and rescue and the Canadian Rangers, who would help with an evacuation. All right. So what I did is I prepared sort of a bit of a
Can I ask one other question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go back?
Yes, please. I need to understand a little better your comments around if we declare a state of emergency and we determine that evacuation is needed, that as soon as, if it was from a wildfire, as soon as we declare that evacuation is needed, it switches to the RCMP and they take control? Is that correct?
They would take control of the evacuation. They would conduct the evacuation. They become the incident commands of the evacuation only.
Okay, so at that point, there'd be two incident command centers in the community? Or would they be working out of our oh, would it make sense that they'd be working out of our EOC to do that?
They could be. So the B.C. B.S.R.M.'s regulation, we would use a unified command structure.
Right, okay, but it might not happen in the same place.
It might not happen in the same place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the first stage of a three-stage of a planned evacuation is an evacuation alert. So during an evacuation alert, I just made some notes about what sort of some of the focus areas would be. So as an EOC, our focus would be communications, preparation, and planning. We would be focusing on vulnerable populations and the identification of those who may need assistance to evacuate. We would start to reduce or have a reduction of non-essential governance services. We would work with the RCMP to finalize the potential evacuation routes. We would arrange logistics such as buses, planes, and other resources, and we would pre-locate them close to the community. So during an alert, we would look at getting buses up from Port St. John and pre-locating them in the community. We would pre-locate things such as porta-potties, traffic control, all bring them closer to the community. So if we needed them, we could then deploy those. We would need to contact potential host communities and set up emergency support services. And on alert, we have the ability to begin arrangements for the evacuation of commercial livestock where that is feasible. I just picked out a couple of areas that I thought would be really important to sort of talk about. One of the ones would be communications, so public communications and notifications for the community evacuation alert. When you look at communications, you always want to start with your broadest your broadest communication process first and use that one first. So starting from the top. During an evacuation alert, we would use our VoIP alert system and the provincial alert-ready system. We would also utilize radio broadcasts. We would utilize social media and our website. We have a number of direct contact with some support groups within our community that have those links to the vulnerable population in our community, so we would begin to utilize those. We would use news releases. We would set up a public information lines that people could call to say, you know, to get clarity, to gain information if they don't have access to the internet. We would also publicly state that if anybody requires assistance to be evacuated, they could sort of register. They would give us their information, their address, what type of assistance would be needed, and we could start to create a list of those folks. We have in the past, we've done printed notices at common public gathering spaces. We would do both commercial and residential. So we would do things like gas stations, apartment building lobbies, any place that we would reach multiple people. And last choice at this stage would be a door to door. So that is our last choice, just because that that is a quite an endeavor to do in a community, even a small one of our size. But if required, we would do door to door. We would probably do door to door in some of our areas with some of our vulnerable population. So we would absolutely do door to door in a grace manner situation. But we may not do it down in, you know, in midtown, in a general population subdivision. But we would definitely do it in where we knew we had a number of vulnerable populations. So again, we would start with the method with the broadest reach. We would ensure that our messaging is standard, consistent and credible across all of our sources. We would ensure that we align with our community partners, including any First Nations, RCMP, BC Wildfire, Public Services in Precurement, Canada, Modi and et cetera. And then one of our biggest jobs is always ensuring that we have regular updates. Try to keep the residents and the population as up to date as possible on any new any new information. Some of the activities that are going on in the EOC, we are going to be inquiring those necessary resources and pre-positioning transportation such as buses, aircraft, fuel supply. We would be coordinating human resources required for the evacuation operation. So we would work with the RCMP, Northern Rockies Fire Rescue and our own Public Works crew. We would be confirming critical and RRM operational functions such as water, fire service, and we would be activating our business continuity plans. And we would work with host community ESS partners to establish reception centers in our destination communities. One of our biggest focus during an evacuation alert would be our vulnerable population. So this is just a bit of a sniff of some of the information that we have. I'm just gonna move. Oh, that's you, Jay. Perfect. Thanks. This is just a little bit of a sniff about how we identified our vulnerable population. So this is based on the 2021 census. The first column is the entire Northern Rockies Regional Municipality, including all First Nations. So our total population is just under forty-five hundred and just over twenty-five hundred total dwellings with only nineteen hundred occupied. Of course, we would probably never, I'm gonna knock on wood here, evacuate our entire municipality. That's eighty-five thousand square kilometers. So I'm gonna focus on the next two columns over, which is the Fort Nelson Community, which Census calls basically the old town site, our town with FNFN. Because we have, basically, if we are evacuating, there's a high likelihood that they would also be evacuating. So together, we are approximately just over three thousand people. We have eighteen hundred dwellings. We only have thirteen hundred dwellings occupied though. So when you think about household groups that you're going to need to provide support for on the other end, according to Census Canada, we only have about thirteen hundred of those as occupied dwellings. So in age ranges, we have just over six hundred in the age bracket zero to fourteen, just over two thousand that are fifteen to sixty-four, and three hundred and sixty-five that are over the age of sixty-five. A total children count is eight hundred and ten, and our total seventy plus is one eighty-five. So those would be the two age brackets that we would consider to be vulnerable, both the young and the seniors. One of the other areas that emergency managers consider to be a person, a vulnerable person, could be total one-person households. So one-person households often don't have the means or the ability to evacuate themselves. So within Fort Nelson and FNFN, we have four hundred and seventy-five one-person households. We have one hundred and ninety-five one-parent families. So those again are those who may need a little bit more assistance. And in the income streams, individuals without income, we have seventy-five individuals without stated income within our two communities. Those household incomes or households with a take home less than seventy thousand, we have six hundred and fifty-four. And on the low income measurement on an individual, we have four hundred and sixty-five. So when you think about those percentages, and when you think about people who are probably in more than one of those categories, we figure we're approximately fifty percent vulnerable population, which gives us six hundred and seventy-six households that we would need to provide additional support to, that would not be able to self-evacuate. I.e. pack their own home, get in their own car and drive to Fort St. John, for instance. So when we're talking planning and when we're giving numbers to host communities, those are the types of numbers and those are the types of people that we are planning for. Those are the numbers that we think we might need to provide transportation to, whether it be bus or aircraft. So that's sort of just a bit of a sniff about some of the information that we have. Alright, moving on to stage two. So stage two is an evacuation order. Our focus in the EOC is going to be communications, coordination, resource allocation, transportation and operational support for the evacuation. Once the evacuation is complete, we would be coordinating and issuing access permits. So if people need back into the evacuation area for a legitimate reason, there is an access permit process. We would also be maintaining situational awareness and providing updates, updated information to all of our residents. In order to communicate a community evacuation order, we use a lot of the same sources that we did the first time, except we add a couple. So again, all of our alert systems, radios. We also use, would use loudspeakers on emergency vehicles driving through neighborhoods. We would use social media and our website again, again, those contact lists, news releases, our emergency information line, public notices. But we would also, we would absolutely do a door to door system, and we have a door to door system. I'm just gonna reach across here. So when you do a door to door evacuation notice, you send your door knockers out with a set of flagging tapes. It is color coordinated and it is all printed with a notice. So if you look in your evacuation plan on page putting my little pictures here. If you look in your evacuation plan on page eighteen, you'll see a picture of the flagging tape. So it has blue for not home. So this would mean that a door knocker has gone to the home. They were, nobody was home, so they would take a chunk of this flagging tape. They would attach it to that home in a visible area. So when emergency services are driving by, they would know that that home did not have a person-to-person contact made. The yellow would be evacuated. So if an emergency individual made contact with an individual at that home and that individual indicated that they were evacuating, they would leave this piece of tape with them. So then ask the resident, tie this on your house somewhere so that when you leave, emergency response personnel, when they're doing their neighborhood checks, would know that that house had been evacuated. We have notified. So this one would be used if there was contact made. And but the individual was still in the home, but hadn't left yet. And then you would leave them the yellow to ask them to tie it on their house when they did leave. You have red. This means I need help. So if you, as a door knocker, come across somebody who needs some assistance, they don't have a vehicle, they need some kind of help, they would record the address, they would record the help required, and then they would leave this flagging tape on that house visible somewhere. And then when the emergency services were going by, that they would know that they needed help. We've also got refused. I'll talk a little bit more about refused in a couple slides, but if a person, an individual does refuse an evacuation, you would tie this ribbon onto their home so that once the evacuation was complete, when during the patrols of the community, those individuals would not be surprised to see a person at this home. So you know that that person, that home was still occupied. These are standard colors used throughout the entire province. The RCMP, BC Wildfire, Fire Rescue, we all use the same colors. So I'm just gonna talk just a little bit about one of the evacuation methods, which is gonna be always our first choice, which is gonna be road. We would use personal vehicles for those able to self-evacuate, and we would do supply transportation for those who require assistance. For anybody who lives here, you know, we've only got really two ways out of town, so south. Both routes pose some challenges. One is, of course, a greater distance than the other, but just because if we go south, we do have to realize our final destination may not be Fort St. John. When you think thirteen hundred homes, residents, family units that are evacuating this community, there will not be thirteen hundred rooms available in Fort St. John. So we could be going further. We could be going as far as Prince George. We could be going into the Chatwens. We could be going into the Dawson Creeks. We could be going into the Tumblr ridges. We could be going all the way down to Prince George. Between Fort Nelson and Fort St. John, we know we would want to provide what I call comfort stations. So we would, we have designated rest areas where we would set up internet with our Starlinks. We would put in porta potties or additional porta potties if there already were some there, such as trуть. And we would want to supply drinking water. We know we would probably also need to enter a fuel arrangement with any fuel suppliers between here and Fort St. John to provide residents with some fuel. That is a four hundred to eight hundred to nine hundred kilometer trip. Not everybody has the means to at a moment's notice, purchase that much fuel for a vehicle. If you also think that a lot of these vehicles are going to be recreational vehicles that are going to use a lot more fuel than others. So we do know that we're gonna have to provide fuel. So we have had those conversations in advance with emergency Management Climate Readiness Ministry, and they are prepared to support providing fuel to our residents for evacuation purposes. North, north could be as far as White Horse or even worse. If White Horse, from a commercial lodging perspective, was completely full, we are going up and over. We're going up and over and back down Highway thirty-seven to the terrace area, which is an even longer distance. So again, we would need to provide comfort stations, but this becomes a huge logistical challenge for things such as fuel. If anybody's driven Highway thirty-seven, there is not a lot to stop between the when you come out of the Yukon till you head down into D's Lake. Very few rest areas, not a lot of pullouts for RVs. And we know we would need traffic control for pinch points such as Steamboat Mountain, where the first sign of internet signal, everyone's gonna come to a screeching halt to want to pull over. So so we have plans for both of those routes. We've got designated areas where we would establish internet porta potties. We would also establish pullouts for RVs in places such as the Tetsu River gravel pit. Thank you. I lost over there for a second. We've been working with Public Works and Precurement, Canada, to be able to also coordinate the gravel pit at Adset Creek, just before Prophet River. The one on the right-hand side that we could coordinate that for a pullout station. We've also chatted with Public Works and Precurement, Canada about the Prophet River airstrip and potentially even creating an exit at the far south end. So you could have a one-way, because right now when you come in at the north end and you go down the airstrip, you have to come back to the north to get out. That creates a bit of a traffic hazard. So we've talked about punching in an exit at the south end if needed. Because we know people are not going to be moving quickly. It's gonna be a lot more than a four-hour drive if we have to go south. So we have these planned increments and stages to get people south with areas they can stop, breathe, rest, let the kids out, do whatever they need to do. So our always goal would be a south route, but if we have to go north, we have those plans in place as well. Just a note for those requiring transportation, i.e. bus, or medical assistance, north is absolutely not a feasible ground. We cannot send vulnerable populations who require medical assistance, or those on a bus, nor. The round trip, it would take every bus we ever, ever have, and they would be gone for twelve hours. So we need quick turnaround. So if we are forced into a north evacuation route, our choice is to send our people who require transportation out by plane. So that would be our, our absolute choice if we have to do a north ground road evacuation. So I'll chat a little bit about air. Oh, aircraft. About seven years ago, we had the Canadian Forces here. We chatted about their aircraft and their availabilities with the Hercules out of Comox and how long it would take to get the couple of Hercules that sit in Saskatchewan. We would also use commercial and charter aircraft from Canada North, from Buffalo Air, from any of the number of the charter companies that operate in the north, including local villagers. One of the things that we have to make sure, if at all possible, that our runways have adequate visibility to land. So that is the key. Some of, again, the challenges and resource with air transportation, it would require several round trips for an entire community evacuation, which is why we would prefer a bit of a hybrid. Those who can go by ground would go, and we would just use air for those who absolutely need it. Because individuals are absolutely restricted, especially on Canadian Forces aircraft, to limited personal belongings. You're not taking everything. You're taking what you can carry. Pets are allowed on Canadian Forces aircraft. They must be in carriers or on leashes, and if it's a larger dog or a the dog with sort of a muzzle, and that is always at the pilot's discretion of the, of a Canadian Forces aircraft. Depending upon the commercial or charter aircraft that we get, they, that also could be up in the air, depending on where pets would be allowed in the cabins. So we would be, so air would be used during a road evacuation, again, to remove those vulnerable populations. And the Fort Nelson General Hospital would move all of the medically compromised individuals by air, and they would be going to probably Prince George or south to Vancouver where they could have the medical services that are required.
In this instant, would they be returned home?
I would hope so. I would absolutely hope so. Yeah, that is a good question. So if we are doing a road, road evacuation, some of the resources we're gonna need are some motor vehicles. So buses, we know we've locally got Diversified Transportation, who holds the bus contract for School District eighty-one. And now that they are dismissing school on an alert, those buses have now become a little bit more available to us. Fort Nelson First Nation also has a bus that is, they have enough bus capacity to evacuate all of their elders via coach. So they can take care of their elders. But we also have within the community hotel buses. So any of the hotels that have a little shuttle bus, we would utilize. And there's also other contractors that we would use out of Fort St. John, probably again, the Diversified Transport. Diversified Transport in town does have eight buses that hold forty-six people each. They are not coaches. These are, I'm gonna call them the cheese bus. These are the school buses. There are four newer, four older. But they are reliable, coached, there are reliable buses that we could get people, and we would be comfortable getting people a short distance, not a long distance, but a short distance. We also have specialized buses in the community, the Northern Health Bus, the Senior Society Bus. Northern Health would probably utilize both their bus and the Senior Society Bus to evacuate any people that require medical assistance or mobility. Those buses could also be used to shuttle people between their homes and a staging area. So we would be able to utilize those short term. We wouldn't want to take any of those up for a long term because they could be better utilized in the community. Residents would always be encouraged to assist each other wherever possible. So if you have, if you're a family of, of two and you have three vehicles, somebody may be able to drive your third vehicle out. That's always an option if you have that insurance. We always encourage people to help a neighbor, do carpooling, do whatever you can to help people out. Within the community, we may be able to use municipal and emergency response vehicles to get peoples from their homes to a staging area while we wait for a bus to return from a run down the highway. In terms of aircraft, I already chatted about the Hercules, but we also have charters through local and non-local operators. Villar, CMA, Pacific Coastal, Canadian North, Buffalo, Air North. And last summer, EMCR made contact with most of them, just to talk capacity, just to talk availability. But we will refresh that list this year, just to make sure we've got those same contacts made. So we are also have been in discussions, preliminary discussions with Yukon EMO, just to chat about their availability to take us should we need to go north. So into White Horse. So we are starting those conversations as well. That is a highly unlikely scenario though, as the season continues, because their commercial lodging is almost at one hundred percent through the summer months due to tourists. So
I have a question.
Can't read the green screen there, but okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. So Aaron, have we spoken to some of these contractors? The Fort Nelson First Nation about their bus, the Senior Society Bus, the hotels about using their buses, because they might have a plan of their own. You know, if we're relying on them, we need to know, or they need to know that we'll there's an expectation that we'll be relying on them for some service. So I'm just wondering about our interaction with them.
We don't tend to rely on the Senior Society Bus, because we know Northern Health needs that bus. So we tend to sort of leave that one to Northern Health until they're done with it, and then we would utilize it wherever possible. We haven't chatted with the hotels this year, but that is on our, our list to reengage with the hotels. In prior years, we had chatted with the Senior Society. We've chatted with Um, in prior years, we had chatted with the Senior Society, um, we've chatted with diversified, we've chatted with FN FN quite a bit about, um, their bus. And we don't count their bus as our resource, that's their resource. Um, but yeah, we do have to reengage with all of these, um, community partners. And we have, we're starting to engage with some of them this week actually because we're doing our, um, evacuation tabletop exercise planning. So we are meeting with a number of our community groups on Wednesday. Um, and James and I are scheduled to meet with the Senior Society, the Literacy Society, Grace Manor and, uh, the Lamp Lighters. So just to sort of chat about their needs and about, um, especially with the Senior Society about their bus. And, and let them know that we don't have, um, we're not, I don't think their bus is our resource. Their buses, Northern Health has said that they would require that bus for helping to move the patients, especially from the hospital to the airport. Where they would be transported by air, so.
Right, uh, yeah, because I, I mean, as long as, as long as they know that, that, uh, you know, what I, what I'd hate to see is that. You know, they throw a bunch of people into one of these shuttle buses and they're gone out of the community. And, you know, there was an expectation that we were going to, on their, based on their own evacuation plan, right? That they, they had a plan that they decided what they were going to do or the residents got together and said, let's get the heck out of here. And, uh, and they use one of those, those buses to do that when, you know, when there's an expectation that, that we might need it, uh, as a community resource. So, oh, I'm, I'm glad that you're, uh, that you're going to engage with them over the, over the next little while. Thanks.
You bet. So I also wanted to chat a little bit about what I call the reality of ESS. So a lot of people may have a, um, a vision of what, if you are evacuated, what the province is going to provide. Um, to you, um, those communities who have been evacuated know that often your expectations and realities are quite far apart. So I just want to prepare, um, people and get the message out there. Um, as I mentioned before, we will most likely not all be going to the same community. Uh, there is not a community in the north that has over thirteen hundred hotel rooms that could assist us. Um. If you are evacuated, under the provincial rules, you are entitled to a number of, uh, pieces of assistance. The first one is I'll call meal slash food assistance. You have two choices with meal food assistance, you can get a restaurant or grocery daily rate. With the restaurant, your daily rate is fifty three dollars per person, that's it, for three meals in eating in a restaurant. Your grocery daily rate is twenty two fifty per person. So if you're a family of five, you're going to get five times twenty two fifty. If you're a family of one, you're going to get twenty two dollars fifty cents per day if you go to buy your groceries. The other option, the, I'm sorry, the other, um, assistance that they do provide is accommodation assistance. This one is a little bit more flexible, um, that accommodation assistance is usually paid at the provincial government rate from pre-arranged suppliers. And you're going to be staying in either a hotel or a motel of the community's choice, not your own personal choice. Um, you could be staying at, uh, B and Bs or if you are, you have your RV, you can also stay at RV campgrounds. You can also stay at BC parks, that is also eligible for ESS. Um, if you have a pet, there is no guarantee that you're going to be able to get a friendly room. So you have to always keep that in mind. Billing in private homes is also available and unfortunately so is group lodging. So group lodging, um, consists of pretty much what it says. You are staying in a group lodging facility. Most recently, the province has acquired or leased for the wildfire season several out of use oil camps or work camps. So you are in a bucking horse style camp, um, and that is your group lodging facility where you're provided with perhaps a canteen for food and, and meals. So the reality doesn't look pretty when you think about where you could be going. The reality also isn't very pretty when you think about if we're not the first community to evacuate, maybe we're the eighth. In a bad year and all of those commercial lodging facilities are taken. That means we are most likely going to group lodging, so. Um, in addition to meals and accommodation, you can receive up to a hundred and fifty dollars per person for clothing. When evacuees did not have sufficient time to pack. For transportation, it's to meet immediate needs only, they will purchase bus passes, minimal taxis or fuel for evacuation. In the case of a community such as ours, that is not a standard. The folks in Tumblr Ridge got fifty dollars to evacuate from Tumblr Ridge to Fort St. John. So our arrangement is not typical, it's given, but it's given our distance. Um, you also will receive up to fifty dollars per person for incidentals, which are things such as laundry services, personal hygiene and pet food, stuff like that. There are also some supplemental supports at reception centers such as mental health and pet care. And often there are groups that come forward with pet care, um, and they'll offer to take care of pets for those evacuees who couldn't get a pet friendly room. Or they exceed the allowable number of pets or the types of pets, people evacuate with chickens. So, you know, we don't put chickens in hotel rooms. So usually lots of, um, community members at the destination come forward to assist evacuees with, um, extraordinary needs such as that. The province has been, uh, made aware, acutely aware that this program is not sufficient. It does not meet the current needs in our inflationary times. So the rates and the program are currently under review, it is highly unlikely that that will be completed this summer. So. Residents are highly encouraged to make their own arrangements with friends and family, um, in other communities in the event of an evacuation. If, um, in the event of a busy wildfire season, being sent to group lodging is highly likely. That is, of course, none of our, our first choice. Emergency support services are not designed to provide everything a person needs, they are essentially a short term bridge. Um, part of our education campaign this spring is going to get the community to prepare grab and go bags to be as prepared as possible. Not only for at the destination, but that trip, that four, eight hour trip to get from here to wherever we need to go. To have some things to keep your family comfortable, safe, water, a little bit of food, all of the things that you're going to need when you get to your destination. Such as your prescriptions, such as your contact lists for emergency contacts back in the community. Um, copies of your homeowner and tenant insurance policies, because little known fact, many of them cover evacuation. So check your homeowner's insurance because it covers evacuation at a greater level than what the province is going to give you in terms of reimbursement. So check your homeowner's policy, if you're a tenant and you have a tenant policy, check that as well, it may also cover evacuation. Um, if residents have RVs, they can be utilized and campground fees are eligible for ESS. We do have planned RV stops along both the north and south evacuation routes. Um, we're also participating in what's called the electronic registration and assistance tool or ERA for short. And residents can pre-register, so you can pre-register as, as a resident of Fort Nelson. Um, if you have your BC Services Card app, you are eligible through the ERA tool to verify your identity. And then you can receive electronic fund transfers for many of your ESS, um, uh, cost supports. So you don't have to go to that restaurant with the piece of paper that says, you know, I have a, a referral for breakfast or a referral for lunch. You're able to receive those, um, electronically in your bank account, you have more choice that way. Um, and last year, remote ESS registration may be available. So if you are an RV owner and you decide you're going to stop at Buckingham Horse, you're not going to go all the way. Um, we'll have an internet stop down there, you can get online, call somebody, do your ESS registration and you're done. You don't have to travel all the way to that reception center in Fort St. John, so. So I'm going to just chat a little bit about evacuation refusals or, um, often called stand their ground. So evacuation is not legally mandatory and I have an asterisk beside that because there are some situations in which it is. One of the biggest one is minor children, so minor children cannot remain in, in an evacuation order area. Um, it's general knowledge amongst emergency management that five to ten feet, five to ten percent of people will refuse to evacuate. For whatever reason, um, those who choose to remain is really important. And the folks that are doing the door knocking, um, they are given a bit of a script. So they're basically told that if you come to a door and your, the individuals tell you that they're not evacuating. We ask for the name of the dentist. Because we need dental records, because it, emergency services will not be coming if something happens. Um, it is really important that anybody who refuses to evacuate has a full understanding of the, the ramifications of that decision. So those who choose to remain will not have access to groceries or other any retail services. Power may be lost, of course, we all live in this community, ambulance and medical services are suspended. So, um, the, the hospital is closed, um, BC ambulance actually situates, they are not allowed to be within an evacuation order area. So BC ambulance exits the community. They actually situate themselves outside of the order area. Um, residents who remain are restricted to their own property. Because the community is still on evacuation order, you cannot roam about the community. Um, you cannot come and go in will unless you have a, a very valid reason to exit the evacuation order and then request to come back in. The community, if possible, will be secured and patrolled by the RCMP. And structural protection equipment, if it is, uh, strung across roads, you cannot travel down that road by vehicle. So there's going to be hoses every thirty feet or so. So it is important that people understand, um, it is more common in rural areas that people stay, um, and protect their own property. They also have a little bit better of a escape route if you are in rural property versus somebody who's in more of an urban, an urban home. So. There are people that do refuse to evacuate, so it is a, it is a reality and, and we just work with whatever we're given to work with, so. But it is our job to secure the community, so we don't have people just roaming the community and taking things. Um. So let's chat a little bit about EOC staff and governance. So if safe to do so, EOC staff do remain in the community, um, they are one of the last to leave. The, um, safety of the EOC staff basically goes into BC wildfire hands, um, that they're doing the hazard assessments. And they would issue that notice that when EOC staff have to leave, that's, they do it on BC wildfires, basically. They would say, go, we would leave. Um, governance services are reduced to critical and essential only, and if required, will be established and ran from a neighboring community. And our procedural bylaw does permit electronic media participation. Um, our EOC is also essentially portable, um, and it could be established elsewhere, uh, if required, such as the community hall in Code River. Stage three, the happy stage. Everybody's coming home. So, uh, when we rescind an evacuation, uh, first off, the community would need to be deemed safe from hazards and safe to re-enter. We would need to ensure that we have safe utility supply, so power, water and natural gas. Those two utilities, um, for power and natural gas are responsible for ensuring that all of their infrastructure is safe and that the connections to the home are safe. We would be responsible for ensuring that the water supply is safe. If at any time that water supply became unmonitored, i.e. our, we had to leave, like all of us are had to leave and our, our water supply became unmonitored. It's usually about a minimum of four to five days of just doing assurance of that water supply before we would even be able to reintroduce people. Because we would have to go through that recertification stage again. Um, many communities have done things such as staged returns with service suppliers, let in grocery suppliers first, let in the power and utility companies, let in natural gas. Um, to get the community ready before all the people come in. Um, if widespread long-term power loss was experienced, we would need to develop methods and provide the resources to collect and dispose of what is now hazardous material, so refrigerators, freezers, anything like that. Um, and at that point, we would begin our recovery process. That is the basics of the, um, evacuation presentation. I have a very short emergency preparedness presentation as well, because I always like to help that porn whenever I can. Okay, and I will.
We have time.
I will be quick.
Yep.
So, um, one of the things we always ask people is have you ever thought about how you prepare for an emergency? What if you didn't have electricity or water for three days or two weeks? You had to leave your home on short notice or you needed to contact your family and get official information during an emergency? So, again, I, I like these three step processes, they're really simple. The first one is know your hazards, I've already showed you your hazards, everybody knows what those are, but I'll just show them to you again. So, again, it's that same list of, of, of ten top hazards that we have. Um, step two is make a plan. And. This is where the province has come in very handy. They've provided you a fill in the blank home emergency plan along with a guide on how to. So it's super easy, you just have to sit down with your family, with your loved ones, with your partner, with yourself and just go through this plan. And it, it has little prompts on questions and it, it's really, really simple to do. You're going to grab a copy of it, you're going to sign up for avoidance alert, you're going to gather your important information and documents, including a copy of your home insurance. Copy of your driver's license and any other pertinent ID that you have. You're going to sit with your family, you're going to fill out the plan and you're going to pre-register for emergency support services using the ERA app.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
So you say pre-register for emergency support services using the electronic registration and assistance app, like when? Like now?
At any time you like.
Can do.
You can do it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Step three, we're already on the third step. See how fast it's going to be? Um, there are actually two different types of home emergency kits. The first one is if you're going to be at home. Um, in your home, again, it's like that shelter in place type of a situation. This would be utilized in earthquakes, um, disease outbreaks, severe weather, power outages and hazardous materials fills. You're going to want to try to have three days to two weeks worth of supplies to keep everybody, um, safe and comfortable. So you're going to have things such as first aid kits, prescriptions, uh, battery powered or a hand crank radio, um, a phone charger. Your emergency plan that's already filled out, garbage bags, um, clothing, water for three days to two weeks. Don't forget pets and non-perishable food and a method to heat it because you may not have power. So that's that big bucket that I encourage people to have in their, in their home, that's kind of like your, I'll call it the mini prepper kit. You're at home, but here's all the stuff that you have. The next kit that we are, um, really going to be promoting at the trade fair on May fourth, fifth is going to be a grab and go bag. This is a smaller version of that big kit that you literally can grab and go. Um, and it's more relevant to wildfires, floods, tsunamis, landslides where you are leaving in a hurry. So in that kit, it can be small, um, at the trade fair on May fourth, the fifth, if I haven't already mentioned it. You can get a free, we're calling it the Preparedness Pale, it is a bucket full of a number of preparedness items. But you can grab, uh, an old backpack and just fill it with those essentials. It's a really small list, but it can make a huge difference, especially in that drive from here to Fort St. John. If your kids all have one and they've got a little comfort item in there, they've got an activity book, they've got something that makes them feel safe and secure. They've got their favorite, whatever it is. Um, get that grab and go bag, one for every member of your household. Um, it's not, not a huge list and most people have a lot of these things just lining up. So we are really promoting this at the trade fair, May fourth and fifth. May fourth and fifth. So, um, over the years, I've made a few, a list of some things. Because I know not everybody has the budget to go out and buy all of these new things. So I actually, um, went out and I challenged myself for twenty bucks to see if I could create a grab and go bag. I went to the thrift store and I got an old backpack, I went to Red Apple, I went through the thrift store. And for twenty bucks, I created a grab and go bag. It wasn't, it wasn't too hard, you can also do these things over time, um, you can do them in stages. So assemble this thing in stages, thrift stores are a great source of, of old backpacks. You know, you can refresh a water bottle, find some extra clothes, Dollar Store, Red Apple, Fields, clearance sections. Gather supplies you already have at home, extra phone chargers, some toilet paper, paper towel, old wash cloth, a pen and a notebook. If you didn't come and get my free fill in the blank one. Um, you can clean and sanitize plastic water bottles and use them at home, just use the water from your tap, but just bleach the water bottle, change it every six months. You don't have to go out and buy new water. You can get a free radio app on your phone, if you have a smartphone, you actually download a free radio app. Um, and if you can't do that, at minimum, I ask people, just make a list of those critical things in your, in your home and where are they? So if I tell you you've got fifteen minutes, you need to get out, you're going to go to that piece of paper and in your panic mode, you've got a checklist. Okay, I need my medications, I need dog food, I need to get my copy of my passport, you know, whatever that list is for you. But just write it down on a piece of paper and put it by the door so that if you're packing yourself or if somebody's helping you, they can help you pack in a hurry. And again, business of the trade. So, um, if people want more information, they can get lots of information online at Prepared BC, including electronic. Including electronic copies of these brochures, several others that we have, including a wildfire preparedness guide. An extreme heat preparedness guide. A copy of all of these will be in the preparedness bucket that you're gonna come get at the trade fair as well. Along with a help okay sign if you need it. Um, you could also go follow Prepared BC on, uh, X, Facebook, Instagram, hop into town hall. We got lots of copies here. Visit us at the trade fair. And, uh, we're making arrangements to do some community events for emergency preparedness week, which is May fifth to the eleventh. So. And that's it.
Okay. Questions, comments? I have, oh, you wanna go?
I just had one comment. I seen it online the other day. How many people have empty meason jars just storing in their house? Fill them with water.
Um.
Good. So two comments. What's the plan for if we lose phone and internet service? It's like.
We have a couple of different options. So one of the main options we have, um, people could ensure that they've got voice over IP. Turned on on a smartphone. So they could use, if they have a standalone internet service like Starlink that you can power with a generator, you can still use voice over IP. It would only work for a little while though. Um, because if we lost complete phone and cellular service, at some point, your phone does need to connect to a cellular network. So if that cellular network is down, it may last for, we don't know how long, but it will work for a short period of time.
That's all right aside, but that's if they're trying to use your phone as a phone number.
Versus.
You still have things.
You still have internet.
FaceTime. There's other mechanisms.
Skype.
Audio, audio calling, um, for, for FaceTime audio, for example, if you have internet service again.
Through a standalone.
Provided. I was kinda thinking like the NRM's plan. So, I mean, we would maybe have to up the door-to-door notifications then.
We would absolutely update, we would, yeah, bring up the door-to-door notifications through the loudspeakers, through the community, do printed notices. We've done those a number of times for. Um, different things that have happened on road closures. We've done the printed notices. Um, we also have in terms of communicating with our partners with our emergency services, we've been establishing a, uh, push-to-talk satellite radio system. So that we can communicate with other agencies.
Okay. And then my other point is just a, a hint, last year when we were, had all the wildfires and have a medication that typically my, um. Um, my service provider will only allow me to fill every month, right? So, but I said, well, like we're in wildfire season, like, and so they gave me six months supply. So it's just something. That if anybody, it's just a hint, if you have that ongoing medication thing, that they make you fill every single month. Um, yeah.
It's interesting, just a couple of years ago as well, um, the, let's say it's something like the BC College and Physicians for Pharmacists. Um, they put in a new rule that, um, if you are an evacuee and you go to a pharmacy. Um, you used to have to get like a referral from emergency services to confirm your medication, then you have to go to a pharmacist. They now no longer do that. You just walk into a pharmacist with a copy of your prescription bottle. And then they now have an emergency order that they can do and they can just issue you your prescription without going through all of that red tape. So. They can issue you a short supply of your prescription now, if you're an evacuee. So. It makes that a lot easier for people.
Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Uh, I did. Um, uh, excellent presentation, Aaron. Thank you very much. I, uh, I'd like to see us. Plan a presentation at town hall meeting, um, during, uh, emergency preparedness week. That talks about this and a few other things I'm, I'm interested in getting out there. I know there are questions in our community. Uh, I think it's important that we give people a heads up that we do know what we're doing. Uh, people are engaged right now and, and I think. Uh, you know, more than any other wildfire year, people are engaged in asking questions and I think we need to leverage that right now. And, uh, do a, a town hall meeting where, where we give a presentation on this topic as well as maybe a couple others. Like where we stand as a community with the fire guard and, and what's happening around it. Uh, that structural protection unit, I know you're gonna have it at the, at the, uh, at the trade show. So that'll be good. But it, it needs to have a plan that goes with it. You know, I'm hearing more and more people talking about, well, they're gonna put sprinklers on their house and they're out there buying sprinklers. They have no idea that, uh, if everybody turned a sprinkler on, we wouldn't, uh. We wouldn't have enough water in this community to, uh, to run, to run them all and provide. The water that the firefighters need to do it, what they need to do. And, and so I think we need, we need to talk about a plan for that so people understand. And, uh, it introduced people to the basic operation of the EOC. Uh, so that they understand behind the scenes, wha- what's happening in their, in their community. And. It doesn't need to be a real fancy presentation, but it, it just needs to be the basic operation so that they know that there is a. There is an organized approach to, uh, responding to wildfires in particular. Uh, but any emergency generally. And then finally, uh, you know, maybe a slide or two that talks about. Uh, the FireSmart, uh, program, how it works, what our plan is over the next few years. You know, with respect to education and, uh, the FireSmart, um. Uh, a pro- program of, uh, of doing assessments and, and that sort of thing. So. I, uh, it's not that far away, you know, uh, emergency preparedness week, but I know that we have most of this. Uh, in place already. And, and the presentation that you did today for us, I think it would be the heart of, of, uh. Of a presentation that we, that we do for the public.
Um, Mayor, am I hearing a motion in there then that you would like to put forth?
Well, this is.
No, oh, I guess we can't, committee of the vote.
This is not a, this is not a decision-making meeting, but that's, that's sort of the, that's what I'm interested in, in moving forward by, uh. By emergency preparedness week.
Okay, so noted. Okay, um.
I was just gonna say, thank you. I was just gonna add on there if, uh, be- because you surprised me by that, you really did a motion, but, uh. Perhaps we can put that on this afternoon's agenda or later on agenda under notice and motion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, public news, media, question and answer period. Anything from the public? Okay, hearing none. Um, a motion to adjourn. Counselor Andrews, seconded by Counselor Souls. Any opposed? Carries. All right, adjourned.
Thanks.